I think Commissioner Bees. Good afternoon, it's Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty four. And this is the Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting. We are located in the Ocean Shores Library at five seven three Point Brown Avenue Northwest in Ocean Shores, Washington. I would like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting. I will be taking roll call. Commissioner Bees. Commissioner Barr here, Commissioner Bicker, Ricker, excuse me. Commissioner Barry. Commissioner Ward. And we have a new commissioner, Commissioner Steve Kern.
Here's.
We do have approved absences of, or I shouldn't say approved, but prearranged absences of Commissioner Lawless, Commissioner Bees, and Commissioner Barry to have motion to approve these absences.
Motion to approve.
That was Commissioner Ward. Seconded by Commissioner Beck Ricker. One thing I am going to ask for all those who are speaking to make it easier for those who are reviewing us, viewing us remotely, or who will be viewing the recording later, is before you speak, please do state your name. It's really difficult to follow along on either when you're not in person here or when you're reviewing the recording later. So I would greatly appreciate that. With that said, I'd like to take approval for the minutes. Is there a motion?
Mr. Ricker, I approve, I move to approve the minutes.
And who seconded?
Warner.
Thank you. Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And it passes. We have a new member that I would like to introduce. We have a new commissioner, Steve Kern, who's joining us today. And it's not on the agenda, but I'd like you to just take a few minutes to introduce yourself.
Sure. Been a resident of Ocean Shores for two years. We moved here in June of two thousand and twenty two from the Mezzo Valley in north central Washington, where I served on the Planning Commission for five years. The, I guess the main topic there was always roads because after the, or during and after COVID, people just rushed to the valley and they've also got a, they recently got a, an award to build in five G Wi-Fi. So that's, a lot of people call that the super highway to Seattle. Let's see, I was raised in Wisconsin. I left Wisconsin nineteen seventy six after school and I put all my belongings in the back passenger seat of a car I picked up in Chicago. In those days, they called them driveway cars. Because a dealer in someplace called Bellevue needed that car. So I got there, I went to work for a warehouse where I worked for ten years and then I got into aerospace where I finished my career. And now we're loving Ocean Shore.
Well, welcome and thank you so much for volunteering. I hope that your time is enjoyable. Think you'll find us a good group.
Thank you.
I'd like to open the floor now to public comments. You're allowed three minutes. We'll open it to folks that are in the room.
Lisa, hi, I'm Lisa Tavon. I don't know if this is the right time to bring up anything.
Anything done.
Okay, um, I was wondering if y'all would be interested in changing the pet policy to right now it's limited to three animals. And as you know, we have kind of an epidemic of animals leaving foster homes, including the city that has a channel that's trying to find foster homes. I would propose and I'd be happy to look with whoever, or maybe some new language that would take away the limit on animals, focus on animal well-being. So that those of us who maybe have cats in a catio, you know, lots changed since there's not, there's no much to look for then. I don't know when it's done, but it's kind of antiquated now. People have cadios, they have litter robots that take the litter and people see and shows it off really easily. I would focus on not letting those animals roam. But they have, you know, you can build a really nice catio and have more than three cats. And people have rescue dogs. Sometimes they have multiple old age dogs or or dogs that, you know, a family member died and they're taking on a family member's dog and they don't want to have to give it up. So I'll just stop there and just see where this goes, but I'd be happy to help. And again, focus on animal well-being, keep your dogs on leash, keep your animals contained. That kind of thing.
Thank you for your comment. Yes.
Yes, I just recently read that. And I think that should be directed to city council rather than the planning.
My understanding is it has to go through the planning commission to get to city council. That's why I'm here. I could be wrong, but.
Well, we will, we will definitely take that. And I think you can address it to the council as well during public comments. Are there any more comments in the room? If there's no more comments in the room, I'll ask you from afar if you have any comments. Rita, any comments?
Hi, Carrie. No, I don't have any comments today. Thank you.
Jane, any comments?
No comment. Thank you very much.
Okay, I do have a comment that was emailed me in. This is from Susan Connery and it has to do with weed burners. I do have her handout for you somewhere here. Thought I had it here. I do. So if you want to take that and pass it down, she basically is stating that they're dangerous and probably shouldn't be allowed. And I will submit these nethole to you as well so that we can include them in the minutes so that you will have them. So those are basically her comments. As she goes, so she's against their use for context. She has an article that she has on the link to that article. And a fire safety warning has been issued by the county involved and that you should not be using these. So that is her comment on this and we'll include them in, in the minutes. Without further ado, our old business that we have is going to begin with marketing. As you recall from our last meeting, Chair Lawless brought up that, that the mayor had asked specifically the Planning Commission to look at marketing for, for the city of Ocean Shores, even though we think contextually why it's not something that the Planning Commission would typically do. However, there was a great deal of success last year with the subcommittee on safe biking and walking. And I believe that that's the intent that the mayor has is for the Planning Commission to lead kind of a subcommittee on that to kind of get an envelope around all the groups that are doing marketing activities. Commissioner Barry did send me something in email and I will pass them on to you that he has been out doing and researching. He spoke with Jason Mirsmann from Oat Bay. And he is the person that filed for the ILTAC funds that then that group was awarded seventy thousand dollars for that, which is for marketing. But he thought that it would be a good idea for, for Jason to come and address this group so that we can kind of all be on the same page on who is doing what. So I would think that would be a good idea for him to come to our next meeting if we have room for it on the agenda so that he can address us. We did have another group several months ago that made a presentation as well. And I think in order for the Planning Commission to do a good job in kind of steering this process that will be going down, we really need to understand who are all the players and kind of what are some of their ideas? Before we start having a public meeting, we have to be, I think, have some kind of order to it. So that's his information and really that's all the further I'm going to say on it because I have no more knowledge. But I would think it would be a good idea to have him come into our next meeting. I don't know. Do I need to make a motion on that? If we want to have him come? I don't think so. I'll just pass that information off to Chair Lawless and let him know that, yeah, I think we should do that.
May I ask one question?
Absolutely.
I read the, it was online. I think for lack of a better word, it was a study done on bicycling and walking. Is that what resulted from that meeting?
It did. Part of it. The meeting, I think it started, I want to say last, as you were. Maybe even before that. It was really a result of the Blue Zones group coming into Grace Harbor County and figuring out for each of the local cities kind of what they wanted to be involved in. And the safe biking and walking was one that kind of came our way. At that time, Gary Peace, who was our chairman, is an avid cyclist. And we have a lot of avid walkers here too. And it is kind of hard in some areas where the biking path kind of stops his vision. And I think the vision of, of a lot of the citizens that were involved was to create like a, a big loop so that you could really get around easily by bicycling. But what they did is they had several meetings involving the public to look at all the possibilities out there about what could we do? Some are short term, some are medium term, and some are long term. And they took a vote in the room. It came back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission kind of provided some guidance on that. But then there was a survey that was done online. And so the result of it was, I think, three different areas of focus, one short, medium, and long term to look at. But yeah, that was definitely part of it.
Yeah, it actually started the previous year.
The previous year. Yeah, I know. It was been going on for a while. That's right. That's right. That's right.
Perfect for bikes because it's, it's flat.
It's flat. It's a great area for biking, but cars make it difficult. But I think that's the mayor's kind of vision is that was really successful. And so I think he would like the Planning Commission, not that we're going to have necessarily skin in the game when it comes to marketing, but just to kind of corral the different groups together and definitely involve the public on, on what does the city really want to present themselves as. So I think that's the whole purpose of that. So yeah, I will definitely get back with, with Chair Lawless and let him now to reach out to Jason to see if he can make it for our next meeting. I think that would be very helpful. Our next old business is metal siding in residential zones. In the packet, there was the city code, so I've copied that out for everybody. And you can pass that along. And Marshall's going to be presenting on this.
Hi, I'm Marshall Reed, Lead City Planner for the City of Ocean Shores. And basically, I just wanted to put the discussion on the table regarding the exposed metal fastener. On roofing and siding in the residential, which is our actual architectural features section of the code. They prohibited the use of exposed metal fasteners on siding and roofing in that section of the code. Since that time, we've had a large influx of small accessory and non-essential structures being shipped into town on trailers and stuff like that, sheds primarily that, that have exposed metal fasteners on the roofing. And we don't see these things typically until neighbors get into a squabble or we're driving by looking at something else and happen to notice. But you know, I've been led to believe that the code enforcement team is going to start actively enforcing this. And before it gets to the point of causing heat discontent all over town and having us, you know, potentially reverse our thoughts on that, I wanted to put it before the Planning Commission for discussion to just talk about metal fasteners, the benefits or, or, you know, deficits to their use in the residential zones. And, you know, is it, is it worth picking a fight with the, the manufacturers of sheds and metal roping and stuff like that? You know, before we get into a, a code enforcement issue. So that's kind of what I wanted to, you know, just kind of put out there on the table and let you guys express your opinion. And, you know, if you have a recommendation to make changes to the council or something like that, then, you know, entertain that.
Commissioner Ricker, you have a lot of history on that.
Yeah. I was on the planning commission when we did this. And I think it was mainly because of the old metal siding. Gray stuff, not the designer metal. And, and for us, that made a lot of sense. But since then, they've come out with the designer metal siding and the fasteners are color-coded to that siding. And we were talking before the meeting, I ran into where they have hardy board that's has metal to hold that up. So if the hardy board, we allow that. Why don't we allow exposed fastener? Deciding. Have you seen a lot of the hardy board?
I've seen the panels, but I've.
The panels, that's what I'm talking about.
Don't recollect whether they, they had exposed fasteners to the ones I saw.
Yeah, I was talking with Karen Crowe, two hammers and a crow, two crows and a hammer. And she said, that's the only way you can attach it is by exposed. But they're painted and so they're hard to see.
Wondering.
And it's flat and they're round, round fasteners. So it's kind of like we got a double standard now. We don't allow it on metal, but we allow it on hardy board or whatever it's called. Any thoughts?
What a stupid question. These are, I'm not familiar with this topic. These are fasteners that are exposed, that are metal, and the issue is deterioration?
No, the issue is it doesn't look good. Just aesthetically.
So it's based on cosmetics?
Yeah, cosmetics.
Like screw heads, right?
Commissioner Barr speaking. Do we think that that any longer holds a place? Is it something that just over time manufacturers of outbuildings and siding have realized that aesthetically, maybe it's not too pleasing and now they are color-coordinated? And not as much of an eyesore, I guess? Is it time for us to maybe relook at the code? Yay, day.
Which kinds of roofing had exposed fasteners besides corrugated?
None that, well, other than the, and, and this is also prohibited in the roofing materials, the corrugated fiberglass, the translucent fiberglass roofing with exposed fasteners is also prohibited in the residential zones. I guess it, to clarify, the two different types of roofing in metal roofing that are available are the exposed metal fastener and the standing seam or hidden metal fastener roofing. So the, the preference in the last, in the last commission that the approach to the subject was to require the use of the standing seam metal roofing as opposed to the, the exposed metal fastener roofing. And the, the city has, you know, twenty-five plus years of experience with the standing seam metal. And it is a very durable, you know, as far as a corrosion resistant and stuff like that. So I think between the aesthetic thoughts of the last planning commission and the city's experience with good corrosive, you know, properties of the standing seam, they elected to, you know, prohibit the, the metal fasteners being exposed. But the, the experience and the, the treating and the paint that's used on today's metal fasteners and the siding both seem to be pretty durable. We do allow metal siding with exposed fasteners in our commercial zones. So the, the thought that it's not allowed based on its durability doesn't, you know, doesn't stack up because we're allowing it to be used in the commercial areas. So it comes down purely at this point, I think, to an aesthetic look. And so that's the difference between the two. It was a standing seam versus an exposed metal fastener type of roofing.
These sheds had come into town without benefit of being observed beforehand. What kind of roofing and fasteners do they have?
We're seeing primarily exposed metal fastener roofing on those. And that, that was my concern. And the reason that I brought this subject for you guys to have a discussion.
Is it corrugated or what is it?
It's, it's the standard three rib or four rib, thirty-six inch wide metal roofing. Most of it's painted with a baked on enamel and they have color-coordinated fasteners so you can, you know, it's hard to distinguish that there's even fasteners on the roof from a distance. And so that's one of the complaints that I've had from people who have been wrapped up in the enforcement action is you can't even see them from the street. So I, I guess maybe I'm bringing their argument to this group for consideration or lack of a.
Well, Commissioner Barry also had some comments on the metal fasteners. So pass that along. And basically what he said is, he said he would like to suggest to the Planning Commission, consider some or all of following revisions to the code. One, allow metal roofing and siding with exposed fasteners for unpermitted non-accessory structures. Two, allow metal roofing and siding with exposed fasteners for outbuildings except for ADUs, accessory dwelling units. Three, allow exposed fasteners for metal siding on primary structures and accessory dwelling units. Exposed fasteners from metal roofing on primary structures is not permitted due to increased leak potential. But I think we've just heard it's being allowed in commercial. So that one just doesn't hold water. No pun intended. He felt that in all cases, exposed metal fasteners must be specifically designed for metal roofing or siding and must be the same color as roofing or siding and must be installed with uniform spacing as recommended by the manufacturer.
In my time in Mezzo Valley, most of the new homes were built with metal siding and metal roofing. Now, I didn't know about the issue with metal fasteners, but I would think since, since they're flush, they would, the fasteners would be exposed, but you know, the metal rusts and as it's intended.
Do we want to table it for more discussion or do we want to make a recommendation?
I think we table it till we, Mr. Ricker, I think we table it till we have the full seven members.
Okay, we'll table it. The next topic on the agenda is political signs. This was also something that the mayor wanted us to look into because although he's not concerned about this upcoming electoral cycle, he is about next year. And as you know, there was a little bit of a perfluffle, I guess we'll call it, with political signage during the last mayoral race. And I think that the code probably just needs some clarification. If you read the code, I get through my notes here. And that's in fifteen dot thirty-four dot oh two oh. Political sign means a sign advertising a candidate or candidates for public elective office or a political party or a sign urging a particular vote on a particular issue decided by a ballot and shall include a temporary sign intended to advance a political statement or cause. A legally permitted outdoor advertising sign shall not be considered a political sign. In fifteen dot thirty-four dot oh date, oh dot oh, 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 eight, oh, eight, oh, excuse me. Specifics sign requirements. Political signs shall be allowed in all zoning districts subject to the following limitations. A, signs shall not exceed a height of five feet nor an area of greater than six square feet. And this is where the ambiguity is. Is it five feet off the ground? Is it five feet in height for the overall signage? So I think that's what caused part of the, the issue last year. B, signs must be removed seven days after the election in which the candidate or issue advertising on the sign has been determined. For a successful candidate in a primary election, the sign shall remain until final election, but shall be removed within seven days after the election. The candidate or committee for which the sign is displayed shall be responsible for its removal and/or is subject to the penalties as provided in this code. C, such signs are allowed on city right-of-way out of the most strip zone. Signs may not be placed in any media or on any city sign post or utility post. Signs may not be placed on private property without the owner's permission and shall not be obstructed by traffic visibility. Any thoughts, comments, discussion?
I have a question on that first paragraph that ends in illegally permitted outdoor advertising sign shall not be considered political sign. So does that mean that a legally permitted outdoor advertising sign could have a political message?
Good point, but I would think, no, I think if it's got anything to do with a, if we read it, means a sign advertising a candidate or candidates for public elective office or a political party or a sign urging a particular vote on a public issue decided by a ballot. So I think anything.
That's a temporary.
Temporary sign, correct.
You see that occasionally, these big billboards. National candidates.
Thoughts, comments?
Well, the issue was the mayor at the time, or whoever, councilman at the time, was it? Sign was too high, apparently. So I guess we could clarify that, I suppose.
So do we, do we have, I mean, to me, I think you're right, Commissioner Ward, to think of the, it's ambiguous, ambiguous about the height, the height of five feet. Does that mean five feet off the ground or the height of the overall sign? Because it's, it says it can't be any bigger than six square feet. So that's like two by two by two. So that's three feet by two feet. Or I guess you could tip it on its end and say this way, by that way, but it can't be any larger than six square feet.
What's perceived to be the problem with five feet or the elevation that's saying?
I think it's just ambiguous.
I mean, if you had a one foot wide sign that was five feet, five square feet, but who cares?
Man of honest integrity. I think it's just to clean up the ambiguity. Is it talking about the height of the sign or how high the sign can be off the ground?
That might need to be clarified.
Correct. Or we can just, maybe just say it can't be any larger than six square feet. And however it's oriented or wherever you place it, as long as it's within the allowed areas, maybe it doesn't.
Is that intended to address a possible obstruction in view or?
And interestingly enough, it doesn't say anything like that in the code. So maybe that's another point of clarification.
All the banners out there are inaccessible.
Oh, they're huge. You know, they're eight feet long and two feet wide. So does the square footage minimum even make sense nowadays? Because you can go get those vinyl banners for practically no money. And, and maybe, or, or is there a different, a different category for vinyl banners as opposed to a sign? Signage banners? I don't know. I mean, it's a fine point, right? But it's ambiguous. Is a banner a sign?
Right.
Well, aren't signs addressed, other signs address other, other parts of code? This is just political.
Correct. But we have those huge political banners too, that people put on their fences or what have you. And they're certainly bigger than six square feet. There's no question about that. I mean, even if they have an American flag and put something on it, it could be bigger than six square feet.
So that's out of compliance.
And it's out of compliance. They could have a political candidate's flag, for example. And that's going to be bigger than six square feet.
Is that a sign or a flag or what is it?
Good question. That's why, that's what, what is it? Maybe we need to define it a little bit better on what really a sign is. Is it a flag? Is it a banner or, or what?
I think that strikes the whole darn thing to sell. Like, seems much ado about nothing to me.
Any other thoughts or comments? Do we want to table and come back with some ideas at our next meeting?
I, I did some digging around and most of the cities that I ran into looking at it, they combined signs and political signs in one.
In one big, then did it include banners and flags as well?
I think so.
Most have a timeframe.
Yeah, I think the timeframe is important. Yeah, I think the timeframe is important. The seven days post-election, I think is really important to have in there. Do we want a table? Do we want to do, does somebody want to take a stab at a rewrite?
I think we need to put some more effort into it.
I do too.
Is it currently an issue?
It was during the last election.
Big issue.
Yes.
But from people who were at signs that were
Well, it got to be, it got to be interpretation. There were signs high up in the air. They were small signs, but there were three of them, but they were five feet. So according to code enforcement said, you're over five feet, you gotta take them down. And they said, no, we don't.
Higher, five feet in the signs.
So that was a big improvement.
Yeah.
It's very ambiguous, the way it is now. And even between banners and flags and signs, what are they? I mean, because you see the big banners all the time on people's temple. Okay, well, we'll table that for our next meeting. Um, next we have new business and we have Kurt Begley from the fire department here to talk about weed burners. I will turn it over to him.
Well, I don't know for sure what all I'm going to talk about. I'm here expecting questions and answers. But, um, it's been the fire department's experience that these are a hazard to the city. We go on multiple calls a year, people burning weeds. The fires have gotten out of control and either burned their house or neighbors' woodshed, fence and other things in the path.
I've, I've seen them in five gallons of propane canisters and then with camps.
Yes.
And that, that both would be included in this.
Yeah. Any open flame torch device.
So how does this is Commissioner Barr, how, how does the current code read? I should have printed it out, but I didn't.
It doesn't address torches specifically. It talks about the regulations with open burning and permits required for open burning. And the torches do not follow the regulations put up in the open burning permits. There's most open burning permits, uh, define the fire as a contained fire of a certain size and burning the grass with a torch does not fit in that category.
Have we had any instances of, uh, fires being ignited with these things?
Yes. The, uh, structure fires, fences on fire, we had neighbors landscaping on fire. We've had people burn empty lots.
Seasonal.
Pardon?
Seasonal thing?
Mostly, yes. Um, people don't usually worry about the weeds during the winter time because it's usually pretty wet. They don't want to go out there torch on a rainy day.
In, in my neighborhood, there's, uh, they're used quite often and it's mainly on driveways.
Yes.
Points to get rid of the weeds.
Yep. A lot of people have gravel driveways and they'll torch the whole driveway. And then it'll get off into the grass and run to wherever it wants to go.
Does it actually work more than a couple of months?
No. Gets rid of them at the time, but they'll grow right back.
Probably just kills the top of the weed, not the root.
Pretty much.
Any other comments? Would we make any changes to that? I don't think we would, but
I don't even know if it's in our jurisdiction, isn't it? Seems like a public safety, uh, fire marshal.
Does there need to be any more clarification to the code that you would recommend? Is it ambiguous in any way?
Not to me. But it's something I deal with on a daily basis. But most people reading it, they don't know where to look for, for the right answers.
I wanted to hear about that. Would I find anything in the code right now?
There is an international fire code about, uh, torches are all requiring a permit to be used. Can't be used in wildlife or wildland interface areas and have to be at least fifty feet away from structures. There's some guidance on that.
You're, you're saying this in, in our community, just a residential community? I mean, you report incidents, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So maybe we need to take a look at code more and see how is it really presented in Ocean Shore's municipal code? And see if there needs to be clarification in that.
I'm not sure there's anything in the municipal code addressing torches.
So that might be the
Other than, uh, torches for torch down lifting and hot workers, etc., which also require permits.
So that might, might need some clarification in there. I wonder what section we go in the building code or
So if, if somebody's out using torch, can you do anything? Can you go to?
I'm gonna put torch away. Pretty much what we do at this point.
Sorry, you're telling what?
To put the torch away. And they can do that.
Do you have any authority right now to do that?
Yes, under a safe, our safety issues. Yep.
So the, so the only thing, if we wanted to put something in the real code, would be to reference the fire code.
The, the other place that I see things like this that, that are covered by other areas would be in the nuisance code.
Okay.
Where there's hazard, you know, safety and hazard, uh, shows up in the nuisance code. On some, some stuff, this, this
Haven't really studied that much.
Yeah, but the problem with doing that is then you have a, and this is one of the things that I brought to you guys several times where we have an environmental code that's in conflict with the city of Ocean Shore's municipal code. And that's the thing that, you know, it's, it's always best if possible to make reference to either a building code or a fire code or, but if it's, if the other code is silent and doesn't give you the enforcement tools that you need to address in this case, a hazard, then, you know, maybe the nuisance code is where that fits best. Might be worth looking at.
I think that might be. Commissioner at our next meeting, bring it up, because I, I think if it's ambiguous enough that we've got citizens doing it, and I see it all the time. I mean, I do. I see my neighbors out there burning their driveways all the time.
You do.
And I say, hey, you know, you know, you're really not supposed to do that because technically there's a burn ban going on right now, but there's nothing in the code. And, um,
It refers to the fire.
Doesn't even refer to the fire code, so just to help people understand what the rules are that might be up to that.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Uh, we have a ban pretty much on, we spraying weeds, so we can't kill weeds, uh, with spray. Now we want to stop driveway from being burned, it sounds like. So, uh, I think the way I would address it is through education. That reminds when people go out there and they burn the, you know, weeds on the driveway, maybe they should have the hose going with some type of stop on that to where you could, you know, take your finger shoot the fire going or something, right? And maybe we could have the fire department show a safe way to, uh, control, uh, weeds as far as burning. And get them, uh, participating in it a little bit more. So, um, I, I just, uh, think that it's with weeds out here in Ocean Shores, they just pop up. Particularly where there is no grass or anything, uh, growing already and they love the black gravel in the driveway. So that's my comment.
Can I ask a question? How, how do you say that we can't use, um, killers on, on weeds? Because beacon sprays all the time.
We don't, we don't spray along the sun, on the sides of the roads.
Sides of the road, but not on personal property.
Uh, beacon, beacon sprays, uh, to some extent, you know, on it. But, uh,
Yeah, on personal property.
Yeah. I mean, uh, like I say, weeds pop up everywhere.
I've found that the forty-five percent vinegar works real well. Takes them down right now. Um, is there any more discussion on this? And we'll go ahead and table for our next meeting. And I, I think that we probably do need to have something in code just to refer to if nothing else, but we'll determine that later. Um, next on the agenda is commissioner reports. Are there any commissioner reports? Now at this time, I would like to open the floor again to poll communication in three minutes. So we will talk to the people from afar. Rita, do you have anything?
Hi, Carrie. No, no comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jane, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, um, I just wanted to talk about the, the sign code. Um, and Gary had actually, Gary Pease, uh, had actually found some information on that. Um, but when you do decide to bring it back, um, and I'll gather the information I had on it also. But that was the ambiguity. Uh, was it five feet off the ground? Most people thought it was five foot as far as, uh, footage of the sign because of just the way it was worded with that square footage at the end. Um, so i- if it comes to clarification, I think you definitely need a distinction between what is height and what is area, uh, in that. And, um, the other thing with that, if, if you're thinking about doing anything with the height of it, um, I think one thing that does need to be brought up is a, a sign, uh, uh, line of sight with it also. So you aren't blocking view. Uh, and things like that should also be considered. Uh, and that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Are there any comments in the room? Nothing at this time? Okay, thank you. Our future meeting date is September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four at two PM in the Ocean Shores Library Meeting Room. I, hmm, you know what? I am going to assign myself as minute taker since we're limited on people. So Commissioner Barr will be our secretary at the next meeting. Can I get a motion for, uh, dismissal?
I so move.
Thank you. Second?
Okay.
Thank you. We are now adjourned.